Good evening and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting. It is February 11th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, that was the tape recorder. I've got to turn it on.
I was going to say, I think I better get rid of this. So it is brutally cold tonight, thank you, for those who came, and hopefully we'll get through this in an hour and a half tops, and go on to other things, go home to our warm houses. Oh, I am not able to do supervisor's report tonight because Deb Coon had a death in the family and has been absent, and so we'll move right into the clerk's report, Sue McCann.
Town Clerk Monthly Report, January 1, 2014 to January 31st. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor as ten revenue, $5,954.60. Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for the spay and munit program, $72. An amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $27.40, for a total state, county, and local revenue of $6,054. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And I just also want to say that I've presented the financial report for the Town Clerk and also the receiver of taxes for 2013. Each Town Board member has received a copy of it, and if they have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything, and we're full swing collecting taxes and water bills and selling recycle stickers, so.
Good.
That's it.
Good. Thank you, Sue.
You are.
I know you have been busy. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Hearing none. I have just a couple of announcements, but I'll go to the board to see if you have any before I finish these. Bill, have you anything to announce?
No.
No.
Okay, and Brenda?
I just want, when the Dutchess Community Action was here, I think there were some questions about where folks could get help navigating the New York Health Exchange, and the library has Health Exchange navigators coming there, so you can either call the library, or visit them, or look them up on the web, and they have people coming to help you through the beginning of March.
Great, great. And I just pass to you an announcement received today, Brenda, having to do with your senior services group that might be good to announce. It's early, but we can look forward to spring if we want to.
Okay, should I go ahead?
Sure.
So the Dutchess County Office for the Aging Senior Picnic for the towns of Rhinebeck, Red Hook, Mylan, and the village of Tivoli has been scheduled for Wednesday, June 25th. This will be at the county fairgrounds in Rhinebeck. There'll be live music by Bob Martenson. At each of our picnics, the municipality is asked to pay a portion of each senior's meal and the cost of table and chair rentals. This year, the cost has stayed the same at $375. Last year, 280 seniors from Rhinebeck, Red Hook, Mylan, and Tivoli attended the picnic. And this is from Pat Brown, Nutrition Services Coordinator at the Office for the Aging. So June 25th.
At the fair.
Dutchess County Fairgrounds.
The Fairgrounds, that's a new venue.
That's a new venue.
New venue, yeah.
That'll be different. Thank you, Brenda. We'll have to keep reminding us of that. I have just one brief announcement, but it's one that I'm really pleased to make. I have received from the Red Hook Fire Company their new lineup of officers and leadership in the Red Hook Fire Company, and as always, we are very proud of them and grateful to them for their service. So I thought I would announce who they are. The president this year is Jason West. Vice president is Dave Bayless. Directors are Jim Mulvey, Sean Ball, Robert Frye, Daniel Turgeon, Daniel Stroud. Secretary is Teresa Coon. Treasurer is Jason Neese. And chaplain is Fred Cartier. There are officers, and there are several of them, but I'd like to acknowledge their names. The chief is Michael Lane. Assistant chief is Rich Hillbrandt. Assistant chief is Stephen Fell. Engine captain Sean Ball. Truck captain Robert Frye. Truck lieutenant Robert Stripe. Engine lieutenant Jason Neese. Fire police captain Jeff Levine. Fire police lieutenant Frederick Hillbrandt, sorry. Fire police lieutenant Fred Cartier. And rescue squad captain Chad Cole. So we're very grateful for their volunteer service and congratulate all of those who have moved into the officers' positions. And that's what I have for public announcement tonight. As you can see, Councilman Ross will not be with us tonight. I think we will. Art, are we expecting anyone else?
Carrie won't.
Carrie is.
She will not.
She will not. Okay, that's fine, that's fine. So I think we can move right into the first item on the agenda, and I will recuse for this discussion. Excuse me.
Brenda Kegel will lead the discussion. Thank you, Brenda. You're welcome.
So this has to do with the Kosicki Farm Conservation Easement. In October, the board voted to expend some community preservation funds to purchase the development rights on this property. It's a 74-plus acre farm located between Rokeby and Middle Roads, and since that time, I understand that the outline of the farmstead complex on that property has changed, and so tonight we have our callings from Dutchess Land Conservancy, who's one of our partners on this, to explain what's happened since then. Art?
Thank you, Brenda. This comes into the category of things that it's much better that it comes to us before the conservation easement is placed than after, because a conservation easement is perpetual, and generally speaking, a conservation easement cannot be lessened once it's placed. You can amend a conservation easement to make it more restrictive, but you certainly can't change things to make them slightly bigger. The other thing to say about this is that in doing a conservation easement, it's always a question of balancing the protection of the resources, and this is a conservation easement on agricultural land, balancing the protection of the resources and making a property viable as a farming operation. And every one of these conservation easements has what's called a farming complex, which is the area where the most intensive development of any kind of farm structures is permitted. And this one had the original proposal that was approved by the town back in October that Brenda had mentioned, was an area of 2.6 acres that is around the surrounding. The Kosicki Farm has a farm stand on it that is existing, as well as a combination equipment shed and shed for petting zoo animals. And that area was, well, what happens in the process is that we do something on paper, and then the surveyors go out and mark it in the field. And when the surveyors finally made it to the property in late November, early December, and when Mr. Bosberg had a chance to look at it, he thought that it would be better to improve here. Well, he made requests that we change the outlines of it and increase the acreage slightly from 2.6 acres up to 3.5 acres. When our partner, Senior Cutson, and Carrie Watkins-Gates, and I met with him, we walked around, and our thought on this was that it seemed like a very reasonable request, that if it was the way it was laid out in the first place, we would have thought, fine. And specifically, Mr. Bosberg noticed that part of the farmstead complex, the part on the south end, will end up being taken up by the setback from the southern end of the property, as well as from the farm road coming in, and wouldn't be that usable. He also thought that allowing, that the way we originally had it set would tend to push the buildings more into the farmable land, and generally speaking, should buildings be allowed in the future, he just wanted a little bit more flexibility. So that is the change in the proposal that is coming to the board. In looking at this, we also contacted Jim Waterhouse, who was the appraiser, that we had gotten to give an appraisal of the value of the development rights in the first place. And Mr. Waterhouse indicated that he had reviewed the revised map, and he said that in my opinion, the change is not substantial and would not affect the March 4, 2013 appraisal of the property. Otherwise, what there is to mention as an update to the board is that there is a March 4, the appraisal was dated for March 4 of 2013, and on March 4, 2014, or in about three weeks or so, a month, that appraisal will go stale, and if the project, well, we're hoping to close the project in that timeframe. The way things look with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, we'll call it a coin toss in terms of whether they can actually complete what they need to do in that time. Carrie and I have been working on contingency plans if that doesn't close in that timeframe, I'll say, so we'll keep you posted.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you, Art. Does anyone have questions for Art, or any more discussion about this?
No.
For Chris?
No.
And I guess.
I think, you know, as you indicated, the board previously approved that, and we have a prior resolution which goes through all of the sources, and CPF is the source for this particular one. So the only change in this resolution is to approve the modified form of conservation easement on file that's being approved, and that does include the conservation easement map.
Okay, and I'm assuming you formed the resolution?
Yes, you should have a resolution.
We do, we have it, yeah. Okay, so if there's no more discussion, I'll read the resolution. Amendment to the resolution granting final approval for the purchase of development rights of the Kosicki Farm. Whereas pursuant to Resolution Number 2013-73 dated October 8, 2013, the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook authorized a purchase of development rights with respect to the Kosicki Farm located at Rokeby Road, tax map ID number 6172-00-875153, as described therein. And whereas there has been provided to the town, and there is on file in the office of the Town Clerk, a revised form of conservation easement agreement, and now therefore let it be resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, New York, that the supervisor of the town is hereby authorized and directed to execute a conservation easement providing for DLC as grantee, and substantially the form on file with the clerk, with such insubstantial changes as may be approved by the supervisor, and the authorizing resolution shall remain in full force and effect in all other respects. Don't hear a motion?
I saw good.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Art, for coming in. Thanks for your partnership. And Dutchess Land Conservancy Local Deasement, is that correct?
That is what we have committed to.
Okay, before we go on to the second item on the agenda, I just wanted to note two things that I forgot to bring with me earlier, and that, one is that we have heard from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation that the annual report for our recycling center is due, and Brenda, I just thought I'd bring this up so that you could keep an eye on that. It's, I think, due by the end of March. Okay. So if you want to speak to TJ about that. He's been given a copy of that request. The second thing was good news. We received today from Jeff Martin and Jonah Treeblosser that they are pleased to report that at their request, the New York State Office of Court Administration has upgraded the court computers with new equipment at no direct cost to the Red Hook taxpayers. These new computers have a retail value of $3,594.28. So we thank them again for going after some of the grant money that's available and keeping current the equipment in our court system. And I think those of us up here know this, but I'm not, I can't recall whether we have announced, that the Transportation Enhancement Program, TEP, with which we had applied for some funding, has been closed. The selection process for the program has been complete, and Ronald L. Epstein, Chief Financial Officer for that program, regrets to inform us that the project application submitted by the Town of Red Hook for the Town of Red Hook Route 9 sidewalk emergency centers Phase 1 was not selected for funding. It was extremely, the application process was extremely competitive and included many meritorious projects. Requests for funding far exceeded available funds, and consequently, we were unable to fund all project applications submitted for consideration. This will be the last TEP application round, as the program was not continued under the current Surface Transportation Act, moving ahead for progress in the 21st century. Your project ever may be eligible for funding through a similar program created by Program MAP-21, the Transportation Alternatives Program, the initial application round for which we will anticipate being announced in early 2014. So that's a disappointment, but there are many, many people, many, many municipalities after these funds, and the funds are limited, so the competition is stiff, and we recognize that. Okay, so the second item on the agenda has to do with a letter received from the New York State Department of Transportation, Region 8, and it is an update to small urban area boundaries. And it is sent to Mayor Blondell, myself, and Mayor Brian Cranagh from Tivoli. So essentially, what it is, is just notification that the functional classifications have been changed for certain areas within townships. It's an adjusted boundary. I spoke with the author of this letter from New York State yesterday, and they assure us that the only impact in Red Hook is that it broadens the availability of funding for Broadway in Tivoli, because that is a county road, and this adjustment in the functional classification makes available to those county roads that are in this area, within this map, makes the county funding and state funding available, and more of it to those roads that have heretofore been not included. So essentially, the map has changed from pretty much ending at 9G and 199. It's stretched all the way up 9G to include the village of Tivoli in that entire area of Tivoli. So hopefully, if there are opportunities for the village of Tivoli to receive funding, they will now be in the mix for that. So I guess we're asked to submit to them a resolution, and it is. Whereas Section 101A of Title 23 U.S.C. permits the state and local officials in cooperation with each other to fix urban area boundaries. And whereas the Red Hook Small Urban Area Boundary needs to be established as a result of the 2010 census population. Whereas federal aid urban area boundaries are fixed primarily for capital program funding and eligibility. Whereas the new federal aid urban area boundary should smooth out irregularities, maintain administrative continuity, and encompass fringe areas having residential, commercial, industrial, national defense significance, and transportation terminals such as airports and seaports. Whereas subsequent to urban area boundary establishment, the New York State Department of Transportation will update functional classifications of roadways to reflect new urban boundaries, and perform a technical update of the National Highway System roadways to reflect changes that have occurred since its adoption in 1995. Whereas designation of the Red Hook Urban Area Boundary must be approved by appropriate local officials. And whereas the Dutchess County Transportation Council, the metropolitan planning organization for this area, includes the entire county as a metropolitan planning area boundary for the comprehensive, continuing, and cooperative transportation planning process, the local officials of the Red Hook Small Urban Area approve the adjusted urban area boundary as identified in the attached map and description. And I so move that resolution.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion or question? And as you can see, there is a twin triplet resolution for the two mayors. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, I'll get that back to them tomorrow.
Also so that you need to sign the map.
Oh, thank you, Sue.
They're going to.
I see it, mhm. Okay, I'll take care of that, too. At least I'll do that while we're at it. Okay, there you go. Okay, next on the agenda, the board will recall that we have talked in the past about requests that came through Councilman O'Neill from the Ag and Open Space Committee regarding agricultural fences. And Bill, maybe you can reiterate that before we further the discussion?
Well, there was discussion at length at the Ag and Open Space Committee meetings at the end of last year, and the request was that the Town Board consider amending our zoning to basically exempt agricultural offenses, some of the regulations existing in our zoning. And a resolution was prepared by the Ag and Open Space Committee, draft resolution to that effect. The matter was referred to the supervisor, who then, with the board's agreement, referred it to our zoning review committee, and the zoning review committee considered the matter in session, I think at least two or three times. And it was left kind of up in the air, because the zoning review committee did want to receive more input from the Ag and Open Space, and there was somebody advocating personally to them on behalf of the Ag and Open Space Committee, and to dialogue with them why the members of the committee wanted that resolution. And that didn't happen, so the matter was basically, was dropped by the ZRC. They felt that there was no action to be taken. And then when that was referred back to the Ag and Open Space, the reaction by the Ag and Open Space was, they wanted to revisit the matter and get back to advocating for the proposed resolution prepared basically by Norman Gregg on behalf of the Ag and Open Space Committee. And that, my understanding is, will be done.
Okay, so that's where we are to date, and Mr. Gregg called me this past week and asked if he could come in and talk to me, and we talked yesterday. We did have a cancellation on tonight's agenda, and so it was possible to invite him to come in. I had not seen the proposed amendment, or resolution, I should say, but he described it to me, and I don't know how many of you have a copy, but it is in your packet tonight. This is considered laying it on the desk. You'll need some time to think about it. Bill, you may have had time to look at it. I haven't, I don't think anybody else on the board has, and of course, Jim is not here, so it'll give us a chance to go through it. What I have done additionally is pulled from the code of the Town of Red Hook extracts referring to fences, wherever they appear, in our town code. So you have that to refer to as well. And without further comment, I guess it's time that we hear from Mr. Gregg and his thinking on this agricultural fence issue. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I'm here tonight representing the Agricultural and Open Space Committee. This is a matter that came to our attention right after the new zoning code was passed, and it was of much concern to the farmers in the community. We're one of the few businesses that have our own zoning code written for this business. No other business in town is in an agricultural zone and has its own zoning. We were very aware that fencing is, how do I say it, a normal agricultural practice. It happens in many forms for agriculture. Some make fences to keep deer out, some make fences to keep livestock in, some make fences to support plant life, as in the trellises for grapes, or apple trees, or blackberries, or a number of other crops, but it's a normal agricultural practice. It happens on a daily basis on a farm. What happened, as we saw as an oversight in the new zoning code, is that all fences require a building permit in the Town of Red Hook, which means that every time a farmer goes to repair a fence or erect a fence, he has to go get a building permit and pay a fee and have approval before he can do what is normal agricultural practice. This agriculture is, there's a lot of strong feeling about it. It's, to the farmers of Red Hook, we are the breadbasket of Dutchess County, and we have a very active and vibrant agriculture community. This would create absolutely an undue burden on our farmers presently and going forward. So we felt very strongly this needed to be changed. It somehow got dropped in the last year. We. We finally went and hired an attorney to draw up a resolution for the town board to consider, and it's not very complicated. We're asking only that the definition of agricultural fences be established and that those be exempted from the building permit process. The codes there, the resolutions are on the first page. Everything else is duplication, I think, of what you've done, Sue, to dig out where, everywhere in the town code that fences are listed. But it's, it's very important to the farmers of the community because this is normal agricultural practice, and this really would be an undue burden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. Okay, so comments from any of the board? Brenda?
No, I haven't had time to read the notes.
Right.
No, not this time.
Tara?
At this point, it'd be up to the zoning review board to take a look at it. We've discussed this a great deal in the past, and I certainly understand the concerns of the farming community. It's a daily activity on the farm, so our current zoning probably is hitting a tack with a major hammer there in terms of how the zoning is, fence zoning is applying to the, to the farmers, and it seems to me wise to take a look at it.
And Bill?
No, but you know, we'll follow it with the ZRC and have them weigh into it and hear from members of the Ag and Open Space Committee to answer any questions that they have.
Okay.
Perhaps they could meet a map for the agricultural thing.
Well, I mean, they would invite one or more members of the Ag and Open Space Committee to meet with them.
Doesn't seem appropriate in this circumstance.
To do what? To have?
It seems like it would be appropriate to have a joint meeting of the two committees.
Well, if you want that, I mean, what I'll do, when I learn the date that the ZRC schedules a meeting, I'll notify Pete Hubble, and we'll see if he'll have an Ag and Open Space meeting at the same time in the place. Be a joint meeting.
Okay.
The agricultural committee feels like they've been marginalized in this process, and it's really, it really came to a head at the last meeting. The farmers feel very strongly about this. And when, when the town council decides to chuck it off to the zoning review committee and invites a single farmer to somehow plead his case, it seems inappropriate.
Well, let me just say that the process here, which is not particular to this, this item, but many, has been very valuable in the past. We have, as you know, the zoning review committee, representation from all of the major committees, volunteer committees in the town. They're very intelligent people. They look at a problem from every perspective that affects town zoning and, and our life in town. And I've always been grateful for additional eyes on any zoning issue through the zoning review committee. So it feels totally appropriate to me that they get the referral from us and have them weigh in and make a recommendation to us. I don't think, I know you're gearing up, you're gearing up, I can see you gearing up for, you're gonna, you're gonna go at it. And I'm not interested in that. It is not anyone's intention, who is sitting in front of you, to marginalize farmers. We have worked too hard, too long. You know better, we know better. So don't, don't start with marginalizing farmers because they all know that's not true in Red Hook.
So let me explain what's happening. Farmers, this is our livelihood. We have agricultural, we have agricultural zoning in the town of Red Hook. But we have a code that's written by people who know nothing about farming, and we have code that gets reviewed by a committee that has no interest in farming and knows nothing about farming. So when, when the agricultural committee votes unanimously on something and it gets referred to a committee that has the final say on it, that knows nothing about agriculture, we have a problem with that.
The committee does not have final say. The committee reviews it, comes back to us with their take on it, and it is this board's decision to change the law or no. So if, if you resent the fact that we, the elected officials, know nothing about farming, that's your right, I accept that. But I can tell you this, that this is a very intelligent board, we are a very balanced board, and we will do our very best to make sure that this is a fair decision.
Right.
For everyone.
We've already been to this zoning review committee. This zoning review committee has already decided that nothing has to happen on this.
That is not necessarily true.
That's where we're at.
We are, no, we are returning this, your submission to the committee. If they wish to meet committee together with the committee of the Ag and Open Space, that's fine, they can all join forces, they decide what they want to do, and come back to us. It is no one's intention to marginalize the farmers of this town.
We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Sue, would it be okay for me to make a comment?
It would be okay.
Art Collins from Dutchess Land Conservancy and also serves as vice chair of the county's farmland protection board. The county's speaking for the county, for the farmland protection board. With our board, types of issues associated with fences and approval processes for agriculture is a fairly normal type of thing that comes before our board in various towns. And I think our board would be very welcome to review anything that the town wished to provide us. I'm not knowledgeable about the details of, of either the proposal or the initial zoning, but I think our board would be willing, as a very pro-agricultural organization, but a third party to, to make comments if requested.
Good, thank you, Art. That's very kind.
Is there, there's an Ag rep on the ZRC, isn't there? There's an Ag rep on the zoning review committee?
Who is that?
Yes, Chuck Simmons.
Okay, so we have the content of your proposed resolution, Mr. Gregg, and a fair amount of verbiage regarding the agricultural fences, fences in general, accessory structures, et cetera. And so I'm sure out of this will come some clarity and hopefully some simplicity for everyone's sake. Okay. I don't, I don't know that we are prepared to do a lot with reorganization tonight because Jim Ross is not here and because there are still some vacancies that we know we are, excuse me, we know we are going to hear from individuals but have not applications in hand. So I guess what I'd like to do is, is ask the board, those of you who are liaisons to committees, do you have applications that Sue McCann may not know about for any of these committee appointments? In hand but not submitted through the town clerk? No one?
Well, no application, but yes for renewals. Do you want those as well, or do you want to hold off?
Which committee were you thinking of, Brenda?
Well, the CAC.
Okay.
Has, everybody's responded, whose term was up in 2013, and everyone is a yes, with the exception of Karen Schneller-McDonald, who wants to discuss some of her meeting conflicts with the chair.
Okay. We can certainly, we can certainly appoint those. Would you care to read them?
Sure, it's Lord Houston as chair as well as a member. Michael Zeeley, Denny Collet, and Sarah Imboden.
Are you moving to appoint?
So.
For two-year appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we can just make a note that we'll wait to hear from Karen. I believe the assessment review board is now complete. We have a vacancy on the Ag and Open Space Committee.
At the last meeting, they had some people in mind, and they were going to start surveying some local farmers who might be willing to serve on that committee.
Okay. Are those people, Bill, whose terms expired in 2013, at the end of 13, willing to continue serving?
Yes, I think the committee said they want to keep intact everybody that's up for reappointment this year. Bazinski, Ken Miglerelli, Marina, Norman, and John.
Okay. Would you care to make a motion then for that two-year appointment?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we note that there is a vacancy there, and we'll try to fill that.
Did we do the co-chairs?
As far as nominating the co-chairs, I think we would nominate the same, you know, Norman Gregg and Peter Hubble to be co-chairs for 2014.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, thank you.
So that moves to 2015, then, each year, right?
It does. Those that we have mentioned, Norman Gregg, Peter Hubble as chair is a one-year appointment, but the remaining, Rich Bazinski, Ken Miglerelli, Marina Michaelis, Norman Gregg, and John Hardeman will fill a two-year term. So they, their next reappointment would not be till 2015. There are, so they-
Did we move on that?
I thought we did.
I must have missed it then, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
The CAC.
Yes, we did.
Bill and Harry.
Yes, Bill and Harry moved and seconded.
Busy doing over here.
That's all right, that's all right. If you'd like us to say all in favor again, we will.
Okay, no, it's okay.
I was pretty sure we did.
Work on two things.
Design Review Hamlet has two vacancies. Does anyone have?
We have a letter from Jeff Carter.
Yes.
That I think maybe you have, I don't have it.
Yes, I think it came to Sue McCann, I believe. Yes?
Did you get it? I've seen it.
I believe, yeah, I believe.
I've seen it, but I deliberately didn't take it because it didn't-
Okay. So he is interested in filling one of those vacancies?
Mhm.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jeff Carter then will be-
We'll get somebody else.
Let's see.
I know somebody else if we need to.
Okay.
There was one, one lady whose name was erroneously taken off.
Oh, okay.
Who was it?
Oh, I forgot.
But she's still on though, right?
Yes, but her name's not listed.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Something went, something went kowfily there. That's in the dictionary, that word.
And I thought Jeff was going to be, wanted to be the chairperson, or?
Chris will stay the chair. I have spoken to him.
Okay, so.
So we're also doing Chris as chair?
Chris, Chris will be chair for one additional year. And his term expires, two-year term expires at the end of this year. George Michael, Michael Brown, 213, is he willing to continue?
Yeah, they're all, everybody is on board with it.
All we need is the name of the one person. Well, let's, let's complete the list as we have it. Chris Gilbert is chair, Chris Gilbert, or rather, Michael Brown for another two years.
Yes.
And Jeff Carter for two years.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vince Caluccio is very busy contacting the disaster preparedness committee, and will have the first meeting in March, and is, is very excited to head up that committee. He'll be, I know, a very good chair, and will be making, excuse me, a presentation to us in March about the committee's work. So we'll look forward to that. Economic Development, there seems to be a vacancy there. Has that had any interest?
There's still a vacancy.
Okay.
No, not yet.
Okay. Can we move forward though with the-
The rest of them.
The rest of them?
Yes.
All right, so Chris, Chris Close is willing to stay chair for another year?
Mhm.
Okay. And Amanda Bodian?
Will remain on the board, yes.
Okay.
For two years, two more years.
For two years. Dan Budd and, and the others are still on this year. The only one, Ken Miglerelli?
Mhm.
And Jacob Bump?
And Jacob Bump.
Are they willing to serve two years?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so I make a motion to appoint Chris Close chair of that committee, Amanda Bodian as a member, Ken Miglerelli as a member, and Jacob Bump as a member.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And there is still one vacancy for Economic Development Committee, and that's a, that's a very interesting and good committee. I hope someone fills that. The Ethics Board is complete. Excuse me.
We need to, we appoint them, Bill, the third.
Oh, so we do.
Yeah.
Okay. Harry, would you like to appoint?
Yeah, I would make, make a motion to appoint Fred Cartier as chair for an additional year, and Susan Simon to be reappointed for a five-year appointment.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Susan, oh, I'm sorry. Got it. Okay. We have too many Susans in this town, I've decided. Okay, Greenway Trails, we appear to have still two vacancies.
And we still do, and everybody else is good, so.
Okay.
Could we proceed with that?
Have we brought up to date the chair and the two whose term finished?
Yes, everybody wants to stay.
Okay.
And Howie as chair.
Would you like to make that motion then, and we'll bring that committee up to date?
Sure, I would move that Howie become chair and that his term be restated, that Bruce Cutler be reappointed, and Rich Shaffo be reappointed.
Okay. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the IT Committee is one that hasn't been very active, but, but could be more active, I think. And maybe we need to call a meeting and get them re-engaged. I am interested in having the board consider for membership, the assessor, who is, is probably Scott Hobson is maybe one of the best techies in this building, and he really should be a member of that committee.
Yes.
I think, I don't know that there's any rule that says that we have to have six, but, does anyone know?
No, this is purely a board ad hoc committee.
Right, so we can, we can add a member. Well, I would suggest that we add Scott Hobson as his time allows to this committee because he really is very knowledgeable. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that committee would then be chaired if he's willing to stay on, and I think he will, Wayne Hildenbrand, Steve Cole, Claire Horst, Ted Kudzie, and Bill Moore, a community member. And Deb Coon, I'm sorry. And that is the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.
This intermunicipal shared services highway working group has expanded to some extent because we are now working with a Dutchess County grant to develop a plan for consolidation if, if we find efficiencies and practicalities. I'd like to just restate for the public's sake who is participating in that. It is-
It is from the town, myself, and Harry Colgan from the Village of Tivoli. It is Mayor Brian Krenna and Schneider, Jean Anne Schneider. And from the Village of Red Hook, it is Mayor Ed Blundell and Deputy Mayor Brent Kovalchuk. So those three, and Teresa is, is, is on that committee as well. Are you willing to stay connected to that committee and as much as it's your department?
Okay, so I think I'd like to change the, well, I guess we don't have to change it, it is, it says what it says. Here I am struggling.
It's a seven-member board now, right?
Yeah, it would be seven. It would be seven. Bill, have you any work done on the intermunicipal task force to fill vacancies?
Yeah, we're trying to get Paula Schoonmaker is attending regularly and-
Good.
Try to fit her in somehow. And we're still, of course, always working on Tivoli.
Mm-hmm. I wonder if, you know, what we don't have as representative on that committee is, is the Hamlet. She could represent the Hamlets. Could we make an addition to that? Does it have to be 11?
Any fiction at all is great. We would do anything.
Well, I think she's, she's such a fantastic worker, and she's, you know, she's so knowledgeable and so balanced that she would be a keen addition to almost any committee. Can we call it 12 members and, and still look for a Tivoli and Village Trustee?
Well, Tivoli has Susan Izrodi, and I spoke to her the other, the other day.
Oh, right.
And she said she would be-
And she's willing to stay?
She would stay and become more active.
Okay, so we can fill that vacancy then with the Tivoli vacancy.
Yes, right.
All right. Great.
And Brent is, Brent is the Red Hook Village Trustee. Here it says Red Hook Village Trustee vacant, and his name is on here at the same time, so.
Well, I don't see, oh, yeah, you're right. And also Susan's listed as the Tivoli Village Trustee, but the Tivoli mayor's vacant.
Yeah.
Do you think maybe originally you were intended to have a representative from the planning group for each of the villages, maybe?
Well, we were, but that's a very hard part to it.
No, I know, it's, it's really changed over time, but maybe there were two from each village.
Because I think Harry was Tivoli planning.
I was originally, 10 years ago, from Tivoli planning.
Right, so I, I don't, you know, again, this is flexible.
Mm-hmm. So, Bill, is Ann Rubin willing to stay on?
Yes. And then Brenda Cagle, of course.
And we have a vacancy with, we have a vacancy with the Tivoli ZBA.
Hmm, yes.
So.
Have to talk to Tivoli about that.
Okay. Well, Bill, do you want to?
It could be Tivoli ZBA or planning.
Or planning.
Yeah.
I think it was our intention to leave that vacant until-
Perhaps, yeah.
You know, until they, you finish the work that has prohibited the, the member from attending. And just hold it for him to return. Well, Bill, do you want to call out those persons then, so we know who they are?
Yeah, everybody who's listed here, myself, Ann Rubin, and Brenda Cagle is also representative of the CAC U-10s. And Brent Kovalchuk, Charles Lang, Tim Lynch, who is presently kind of a leave of absence for a perceived conflict, Nick Anis, Robert McKeon, Susan Izrodi, Paula Schoonmaker, and Harry Colgan.
That's a motion, I take it?
Yeah.
I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Now.
I should note, maybe just in passing, Historic Red Hook, as everybody knows, is a combination of the former Ed Benson Historical Society and the Alvendorf Historical Society. But in combination, there's a very active committee. It's principally run by Claudine and Chris Close, but they have actually kind of subcontracted work through the intermunicipal task force on projects. Principally, the surveys made of historic buildings in the town of Red Hook and the inventory of those buildings, which takes a lot of work and time. And where we are, you know, proposing in-kind contributions by the volunteers of the intermunicipal task force for our grants through Greenway, we've also added the Historic Red Hook as part of that. So their work will be contributed to the town of Red Hook on a volunteer basis to match our required grant for the different Hudson Valley Greenway grants that we're working on right now.
Mm-hmm. That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill. Now, since Jim is absent, I think we'll move past the planning board and wait for him to return. Recreation Committee, Harry, have you anything to report that?
That's all done.
Oh, we did that, that's complete, right, okay. Saint Margaret's, has anyone any news regarding Saint Margaret's Committee, either fleshing it out or changing it in any way?
That would be Jim.
Okay. That would be Jim as well, right. Brenda, are we confident?
We are, mm-hmm, we're fairly confident enough to go ahead, I think.
Okay. Would you like to announce the names, please?
Sure, so I move that Andrew Care be reappointed as chair, and Betty Bader, Ed Sanford, Jean Dunce, and Betty Abryle be reappointed for two-year terms.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There is a vacancy on the Senior Services Committee?
Yes.
And we should note that we always welcome representation from the Dutchess Community Action Agency and the Village of Tivoli and the Village of Red Hook. I'm going to pass on, until next week, on Sister Cities because I haven't got it with Tree Preservation Committee is complete? Well, I guess we haven't, we haven't passed it, have we?
No, they're ready.
Okay, Brenda, you?
Sure, I move that Nancy Veskey be reappointed as tree commission chair, that she, her term be renewed, and that Marcy Appel and Eleanor Frey be reappointed for two-year terms.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I called you, I didn't mean-
No, that's fine.
My voice is out of control.
So we're almost complete. The Water Board is complete. The Zoning Board of Appeals will wait for Jim to return. And the Zoning Review Committee, now, Bill, maybe you can field this one. Is Susan Simon willing to stay on?
Uh, yes.
Do we have Chuck Simmons willing to stay on?
Chuck Simmons, yeah.
And the third community at large member? Do we have a candidate?
That's still a vacancy, I guess.
Sam Phelan is willing?
Yes.
Okay. Steve Cole?
Yeah.
Ann Rubin?
Yes.
Michael Robertson?
Yes.
That's the answer to who is the Ag and Open Space Committee, Michael Robinson.
Right.
The EDC member?
It's Chris Close.
Okay. We have a vacancy for the Tivoli Liaison. Does Brent Kovalchuk come?
He used to. He did, yeah. Yes, no, I, I attend when, when he's available, yeah.
Okay. And Linda Stoddard is secretary, and you, of course, are liaison, so.
I would move to appoint that whole group.
Okay.
Did you list John Douglas?
John Douglas also.
John Douglas, too.
Oh, oh, sorry, we went right by John Douglas.
So what's their appointment, we're appointing from this point forward?
Two years.
It's a two-year appointment beginning, I'm, I'm-
But they hadn't been appointed, you know, when you look at it.
Right, it looks like that's been a holdover from 2000, yeah. So it would be 215, right? End of 215?
I think you, if you're going to stagger. Make those 2014 and the other ones that were 2013, 2015? Is that right?
There's only one here that's 2013, two that's-
There's two.
Two that are 2013.
Those two will be 2015, and the other will be 2014?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Did we vote that?
Did you vote?
I don't think we voted.
Yeah.
So, Bill, you, you made a motion.
Yes, I move to, you know, to make those appointments, the same as the existing ZRC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I think that's what we can do tonight. If you'll give me just one second, see if I include it in my. Sister Sisters, if I do want them.
I should, I should mention that the ZRC does have a new, there was a Mrs. Lewitt that was being solicited to be on the ZRC, but I haven't heard back from them. I think you take Marcy Appel's place.
Oh, okay. Good, well, maybe you can get an answer from her before the next meeting, and we'll be able to vote that, and I will be prepared. There, there has been a change in the student representation, and I'm sorry, I have forgotten the student's name. She's, she's a wonderful gal who's going to be a really great addition to that Sister Cities Committee, and I'm embarrassed that I did not write her name down. I know her first name is Jordan. Jordan, I'm thinking of you, and you were going to be appointed, I promise you. I just don't remember your last name. Okay, I think we have come to the end of our business tonight. Anyone have anything they would like to discuss before we go into attorney-client and executive session? Attorney-client for discussion of contracts largely and legal matters, and executive session regarding personnel changes. Anyone? Nothing? Okay. Is there any public comment? Hearing none? I guess we can at least close this session, not close the session, but come back later. We'll move to adjourn to the executive session. And Art, I want to thank you for coming up, and thank you for the offer. That was very nice. That was very nice to have you here. Thank you, Mr. Gregg.
She moved to second.
And we say aye.
Aye.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You keep, you keep me out.